Heavenly Father, as you come to you tonight, we look to you, the author and finish of our faith. As we come together, Lord, we ask in this meeting, this council counties meeting that you would order our step. We thank you for the wisdom. We thank you for the knowledge and understanding. And we ask all God that you would direct our path tonight as we look to you, but we call it down now. It's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you all and thank you for being here. Move down, down to the approval of our agenda. I move that we amend the agenda to move item 9B up to just before special reports. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Mercado. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Now back to the agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Mercado. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Anderson. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. The agenda is approved as amended. I move that I make the motion that we postpone item 9B ordinance 2522 and ordinance to chapter 5.5 beach regulations, article 2, to amend and add definitions and to regulate fishing on public beaches and provide for safety on public beaches. I move that we postpone this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Mercado. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Item 9B is postponed. We'll move down to special reports. Our nonprofit spotlight is neighbor. We won't have any of that. This is an orderly courtroom or this is an orderly council meeting. If you want to make those kinds of agendas, see the man at the door. We'll move down to special reports and presentations. Our nonprofit spotlight is neighbor to neighbor. Georgetown County Council and Francis Pivanel Foundation are partnering to spotlight a local nonprofit. This week's feature nonprofit is neighbor to neighbor with Ms. Erin Rogers, CEO, will be presenting. Ms. Rogers, you had the floor.
Good evening. Good evening, Reverend Neighbors. President, for having to speak today, I am Erin Walters, CEO of Neighbor to Neighbor, and this is Becca Boga, program manager. We've been servicing and neighbor to neighbor, local nonprofits, and servicing Georgetown County since 2012.
Thank you. Thank you. You can go to the next slide when you get there. At Neighbor to Neighbor, our mission's simple. We connect older adults, veterans, and individuals with disabilities to the community through transportation, pantry deliveries, and programs that reduce social isolation. Go to the next slide. Last year, we completed over 5,000 rides that totaled over 50,000 miles. Fifty percent of them were in the rural area of Georgetown County. We bring folks to dialysis, chemo, and follow-ups and primary care appointments, eye appointments. You can go to the next slide. Sorry. So that's our ride program. The next slide, please. We've delivered over 1,000 pantries throughout Georgetown County. You can see our total impact between Ori, Georgetown, and Williamsburg counties on the screen, and we deliver a pantry for Baskerville right now and CMD in Williamsburg. Next slide, please. The connected programs incorporate the Senior Companion Program and Connect Call. So we're connecting neighbors with neighbors so that older folks can live independently and age in place throughout all of our counties. Next slide, please. We're sharing some more of our overall impact throughout all three counties there from 2024. You can go to the next slide, please. Behind every one of our stories, there's a neighbor that needs to be seen and valued and supported, all through the power of volunteers. Neighbor to Neighbor has a big vision. We are grassroots heart, and we don't run buses. We match neighbors with neighbors who give their time to drive, deliver, and check in. Right now in Georgetown County and throughout all three counties, we definitely have more requests than we can fulfill. So we are asking if you all could help connect us to a church member, Rotary member, or senior sorority alumni to help connect our neighbors. Some of our clients might want to go fishing, just putting that out there. Next slide, please. We're sharing our funding spotlight. Benel has been a great local foundation for us. We are very much funded by AmeriCorps Senior Program. We have RSVP funding and AmeriCorps Senior funding for the Senior Companion Program. Next slide, please. These are one of the clients, over 1,500 active clients in our database, that are looking for services throughout all three counties. Excellent. And so if you could share our mission with the congregation or club, invite us to speak at your group, connect us with your compassionate driver or friendly caller, and become a champion yourself. We would appreciate it. That's all we got.
Thank you, Ms. Walters.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone have any comments for Ms. Walters?
Ms. Walters, I've got a quick question. Oh, sorry. For the ride share, do you all help transport anyone with disability needs?
We are not wheelchair accessible at this time, but we do do, if they have a rollator, they have to be able to be mobile to the vehicle right now.
Okay. Thank you. Is that something that's coming in the future?
We are having a higher demand now that Medicaid has stopped that transportation service for a lot of folks recently. They're no longer providing the two rides a month, so we're working on a solution.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
If there's any church or civic organization that would like to help, Ms. Walters would, do they need any special training to help transport or?
We do a virtual or in-person orientation, but a lot of our, all of our clients are mobile, so not really.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Walters. We appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
We'll move down to public comment section. Our public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to maybe three minutes, and no speaker may yield his or her allotted time to another speaker. A timer is provided on screen, and at the end of their time, please wrap up your comments promptly. While speaking, please be sure to address council only and refrain from personal attacks. Council will not respond to any questions during this period. While a speaker has a floor, the public will respect the speaker and allow them their time to address council. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with a clerk to council before the meeting. Madam clerk, do we have any speakers tonight?
Mr. Chairman, we have 17 speakers signed up tonight, and each speaker will have up to two minutes to speak. You are speaking at that podium in the center between the two rows. First person is Greg Haskins.
I'm sure you all are tired of taking calls about fishing. My name is Greg Haskins. I'm the owner of Catching with Greg and Caleb. We are a surf and land-based shark fishing charter, which means we take tourists and locals on surf and shark fishing excursions on the beach. I am blessed and very lucky to make a living doing what I love. Georgetown and Merle's Inlet are fishing towns, and there is a long tradition of the members of this community making a living by fishing. I am part of this community, but my ability to continue to make a living is under attack. The elected officials that represent our community should respect, honor, and protect the history and tradition of the members of this community making a living by fishing. Our beaches are public spaces, and people therefore get to use them differently. While people's fear of sharks is irrational, that fear is a real fear. You are 88 times more likely to die from a rip current than a shark attack. No one has ever died from a shark attack in Georgetown County waters, yet we had someone die just the other day from a rip current. But I understand that the fear of sharks is a real fear, and therefore it is not unreasonable for there to be times during certain months that shark fishermen are not on the beach. I propose new language for the ordinance as follows. Land-based shark fishing is defined as using a kayak, drone, or methods other than casting to deploy baits off the beach that are specifically targeting sharks. Starting the Friday before Memorial Day through Labor Day, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., land-based shark fishing is not permitted. That's it. There's no need to include anything in your ordinance about ordinary surf fishing. That said, the original ordinance language was clear that they wish to ban all surf fishing, and members of this council have made public statements making it very clear that the ordinance would be specifically targeting me and my business. To protect my business and my ability to continue to make a living, I have filed a lawsuit against Ori County Shark Fishing Ban stating that it violates my constitutional right to fish under the state's constitution, Article 1, Section 25, and that is preempted by state regulation of fishing, which allows shark fishing from the beach subject to a number of rules and regulations. These so-called safety ordinances that ban shark fishing are unconstitutional and unlawful. This is America. Our laws are based in truth, fact, and reality. And the reality is that shark fishing has never injured a bystander, swimmer, or surfer in South Carolina waters. This is not some dystopia where our laws are subject to the whims of random beachfront owners. This is America.
Dominic Gulo. Eddie Mackel Downey Jr. John Johnson.
Good evening. My name is John Johnson. I live here in Georgetown, and I wish to speak to the proposed surf fishing change to the existing beach regulations ordinance. First, let me commend council in trying to ensure the public's safety as it enjoys the beaches in Georgetown County. However, choices and changes should be based on facts, not hearsay, rumors, or fear. I checked nearby beach regulations and found that Ori County does not restrict surf fishing, but rather the manner in which a person fishes. The city of Myrtle Beach, which is one by far one of the most densely populated areas, states that swimmers have priority over surf fishing. Surf fishing must maintain, or fishermen must maintain, a 50-foot separation. It doesn't say they can't fish. Next, I found Surfside has a ban from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., being fair to all the beaches, with little explanation. Paulies Island does not prohibit surf fishing unless fishing for sharks. From 2007 to 2025, there have been three shark attacks in Georgetown County. Actually, I'm running out of time, but since 1837, there have been eight attacks in Georgetown County. That's 188 years. None of them were ever mentioning next to or near a surf fisherman. These are all facts you should look up. I found not one mention of surf fishing in the vicinity of a shark bike incident. Placing... Thank you.
Sanford Graves. Michael Shope.
Good evening. My name is Michael Shope. I'm a resident of North Higfield Beach in District 6 of Georgetown County. A lot of folks know me as South Carolina Fishing Coach. I'm here to speak in opposition to the new amendment or any new surf fishing amendment. The state constitution, Article 1, Section 25, protects the individual's rights to hunt, fish and harvest wildlife on public lands. SCDNR regulates what we're allowed to fish for, what we keep and what we can harvest. We pay a license fee for this right. The current ordinance in Georgetown County prevents surf fishermen from fishing in a way that creates a hazardous or unsafe condition. This is enough, this is absolutely enough to regulate and maintain surf fishing in a safe way. I understand the council made the statement that they never intended to ban surf fishing. I would ask the council to look at it through the eyes of the public. What was read in and what passed the second reading unanimously was indeed a ban of surf fishing daylight hours for the majority of the surf fishing season. It was also stated that the new ordinance was going to be brought on for public safety. I would challenge the council to provide that data that shows that public safety issue. Georgetown County has been here 249 years. Surf fishing has historically been a part of that legacy of Georgetown County for that entire time, as long as people have come to the beaches. Can't find a single incidence where surf fishing has endangered, harmed or injured a person. Surf fishing has a huge impact on our economy in Georgetown County. People come to the beaches of Georgetown County to surf fish with their families, swim, they rent property, they buy equipment from the local bait and tackle stores, they buy license fees and it results in returning tourism. What I'd like the council to do is to actually vote the current ordinance down. Let's let the state legislators regulate our fisheries. The ordinance that's in place is plenty good enough. If the council believes that we do need to adjust the ordinance or we need to have another ordinance, let's bring in true experts. Let's bring in surf fishing guides. Let's bring in SCDNR. Let's bring in a state legislator. Let's bring in a marine biologist. Let's sit down as a group and determine a path forward that works for everybody. We don't want to penalize the surf fishermen. They've not done anything wrong. They've not caused any public harm. We don't want to fish or...
Please wrap your comments up, sir.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Jeff Raymond.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a taxpayer in Georgetown County. I have some issues that I would like to air in public, but not without solutions. Otherwise, it's just going to be another bitch fest. So I'll offer some common sense solutions as well. Please don't Ory County, the Georgetown County beaches. Don't New York, New Jersey, Virginia, Pennsylvania, Delaware, Florida then. This overregulation in these areas lessen the fulfillment of our Declaration of Independence to wit the pursuit of happiness. I've been to many of these beaches and quite frankly, they are unpretty. Our beaches may well be the last pretty, well, unregulated beaches in the country. Therein lies the beauty and the appeal to a wide portion of the population. Let me talk about beach access for a minute. Y'all have shut down three public beach accesses effectively. Georgetown County beaches are effectively closed to the public as there is no nearby parking. It is, one is boarded up to a seawall erosion caused by gated community. I'd like you to take up clearing the private use of public property in Georgetown County. Landscaping on public property up and down South Waukesha, I'm talking about road accesses, concrete, entire, I'm not going to get to all of this. Please, please open the beaches back up to the people of South Carolina. And this surf fishing thing is best handled by the state legislature.
How you doing? As somebody with 60 years of fishing at this beach down here, I've never had an issue on the beach with swimmers. Not before 10, 11 o'clock, I've never seen the beach crowded. It's evident y'all don't go on the beach much and that's fine, everybody does it. But even if you did regulate it, 9 o'clock is way too early. There's friends of mine that come from Florence. You have to drive down here, setting up on the beach to fish takes a while. Nobody wants to fish for 3 hours. 4 hours is plenty. Usually this time of year it gets 2 more. You ready to go home, swimmers start coming in. People don't want to fish around swimmers. We don't want to hurt nobody and nobody, you know, but swimmers will get on top of us sometimes, so sometimes we'll just move. But my issue is regulating fishing is ridiculous. And like I said, I've been doing it with my grandfather, you know, my uncle, my dad for years, all down Ory County. I mean Georgetown County and Ory County, all up and down the beaches. But anyway, I just think y'all need to think about this thing a little bit different and you know, look at it from a different perspective and make sure that we're safe in being able to fish and the swimmers are safe. And at this point, that's all I got to say and we'll find out on the next meeting.
Liam Perry.
Morning Georgetown County Chamber. All right, so to the members of Georgetown Council, I gave everybody a paper. You should have it on their desk if you can read it with me. All right, I'm writing to formally object to any current proposed and future county ordinances that restrict the lawful activities of hunting and fishing within Georgetown County. Such ordinances are unconstitutional under Articles 1, Section 25 of the South Carolina Constitution, which explicitly provides their traditions of hunting and fishing are valuable parts of the state's heritage, important for conservation and a protected means of managing non-threatening wildlife. The citizens of this state have the right to hunt, fish and harvest wildlife traditionally pursued, subject to laws and regulations promoting sound wildlife conservation and management as prescribed by the General Assembly. This section makes clear that only the General Assembly of South Carolina has the authority to regulate hunting and fishing as a matter of wildlife conservation and management. Counties do not possess the constitutional authority to impose independent restrictions that would limit or interfere with those protected rights. Furthermore, any county ordinance seeking to restrict fishing or hunting would conflict with the state's sovereignty over its natural resources, not the county's. Also expressly preserved under Article 1, Section 25, local governments cannot substitute their own policy preferences for the statewide framework established by the General Assembly. For these reasons, I respectfully request that Georgetown County refrain from enacting, enforcing or maintaining any ordinance that limits fishing or hunting beyond what is authorized by state law. Should such an ordinance be adopted or enforced, it would be vulnerable to immediate constitutional challenge. I appreciate your attention to this matter and expect confirmation that the county will adhere to its constitutional obligations.
Ginger Pop.
Good evening. He's a better speaker than I am. I am born and raised in South Carolina, a Clemson graduate, extreme outdoorsman and a mother to a son who is addicted to fishing as well. We don't own a boat and we don't live on the water, so most of our fishing is from the shore or on the banks. This is a pastime activity that brings people together for fellowship, family time, and for some, putting supper on their table. Fishermen and swimmers have cohabitated for years, as have the sharks and swimmers. Most know that if you show up to the beach and someone is already fishing, you move down and vice versa. Isn't this a drink in town with a fishing problem? The fact that this passed twice with total agreement is of concern to me and to others. And I have been wondering also, how do we expect our local law enforcement to enforce this when they are already stretched thin and responding to very serious crimes around the county? Please don't let a few people determine how the rest of us enjoy our beautiful beaches. Please let the Department of Natural Resources handle these types of issues and look to them for guidance. I've heard that this issue is being tabled and I heard this again tonight. I'm asking you to, quite frankly, trash it. The only thing that needs to be tabled are the fresh caught seafood from the shores of our beaches. Thanks for allowing me to speak tonight and for listening.
If the goal is to protect the beach, why punish the people who respect it the most? Good evening, council members. My name is Dr. Jason Rosenberg. I'm also Captain Jason Rosenberg, Painkiller Charters. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm here to respectfully oppose the proposed ban on all fishing from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. from our beaches, jetties and piers. As someone who's spent countless hours with a line in the water, sometimes catching fish, more often catching nothing but a sunburn, I can say this with confidence, a bad day of fishing still beats a good day at the office. But with this proposal, we're not even allowed the bad day. This ban would eliminate fishing during the hours most people can actually get out there, retirees, families with kids, people who work nights and weekends, tourists looking for a piece of the local experience. For many of us, fishing isn't just a hobby, it's a form of therapy, a way to unplug from the chaos and connect with nature and each other. Let's also not forget the economic angle. Local bait shops, tackle stores, sandwich counters, charter guides, all rely on steady daytime traffic. Eliminate fishing during the day and you're not only just banning lines in the water, you're cutting off dollars from local small businesses. If the issue is trash, overcrowding or safety, let's target that directly. Enforcing littering rules, putting up signage, consider time sharing your zones if truly necessary, but a full 12-hour blanket ban is like using a sledgehammer to squat a mosquito. This feels less like policy and more like punishment for people who love the outdoors. Let's not turn fishing into a secret activity that can only happen under the cover of darkness. Let's protect access, not restrict it. I urge you to reject this ban and work with the community for a smarter, more balanced approach. This isn't sensible regulation, it's legislative overreach that hooks every fisherman for the actions of a few. This is the third reading, but it doesn't mean it's the right solution. Shelf this ban, let's work with the community to draft something that targets real problems, not responsible people. Bad policy rushed through is still bad policy.
Jill Keynes.
Good afternoon, council. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Jill Keynes. I'm a lifelong resident of Georgetown County, frequenting the beaches of Polley's Island and the surrounding areas. And I'm going to go back to the shark subject. We are living in their waters. We're their visitors. And it's Shark Week, so they're all on vacation anyway. But with that said, the reason I live here is because I'm attracted to the five rivers that we have, the Atlantic Ocean, the creeks, et cetera. We raised our children to appreciate nature and fishing and they will teach their children the same things. And I think the proposal is ridiculous. You're taking away the rights to abuse of public land that we have been given the freedoms to enjoy for forever. So I hope that will be reconsidered and that we'll all be kept informed about this.
John Scheidel.
Good evening, council. My name is John Scheidel, owner, operator of Myrtle Beach Surf Fishing Adventures. There has been a lot of indirect attacks against me personally and from the council members and public interviews and making slanderous statements against me and my business. It's very much unappreciated and I would encourage council, when they're given information, to vet the information they're given. I'm sponsored by nine different companies on a nationwide level that holds me to higher standards as a personal angler than you guys could ever hold me to. So when you are publicly making comments in interviews about me and my personal business to the public that are very slanderous because of a comment that you were called and told the information you were given and you do zero, zero efforts to vet that information, that is a huge concern. I echo every conversation, every comment made so far this evening by everyone that has stepped up and spoken. My number is publicized. Council has not reached out to me one single time, not one single person to even verify the information they were given. And there's been certain council members that have went on public record and in public interviews to call my business out and say we're chumming for fish. If you had any knowledge of surf fishing or fishing in the Atlantic Ocean, chumming is not an option. Whenever you drop chum bait and move in water, it will beat your deployment method back. It will be 3 miles down the beach. Figure out your facts, do your homework, listen to these guys. You have an awesome fishery here. If you have a problem with John Scheidel or Myrtle Beach Surf Fishing Adventures, please contact me, council. Let's work this out for the betterment of the community. These guys here tonight deserve better.
Shannon Scheidel.
So yes, I am that guy's wife and I am a part of Myrtle Beach Surf Fishing. And I am here to address the situation at the Yucca Avenue Public Beach Access. The importance of a beach access is beaches are a vital community space. They offer opportunities for recreation, relaxation and social interaction. Restricting access diminishes these opportunities and can fragment communities. Everyone, regardless of residence or the social economic that they have, the status, should have the right to enjoy the coast. The public trust doctrine, often incorporated into law, asserts that coastal areas are held in trust for the public and should be accessible to all.
Gunter? Oh, he left? Okay, thank you. Charles Farmer.
All y'all know me. I'm Craig Cumbey. I stand here today with a lot of our communities, from Georgetown to Polley's Island, to Waukesha Neck. We have concerns at the current county administrator and some of her actions as she has infringed upon the rights of surf fishermen. A cherished tradition that we in Georgetown County have always carried. As if that wasn't enough, I'm going to make it short because they've covered everything pretty much, but if that wasn't enough, our taxes have become accelerated under her watch, making it unbearable for us who have lived here for generations and our new members of our county. It is heartbreaking to see so many families struggling due to these financial strains. Furthermore, the administrator has permitted unchecked population growth, causing our infrastructure to suffer immensely. Our roads are congested, our public services are stretched, our first responders are overwhelmed and shorthanded. Our quality of life that we once knew in Georgetown County is rapidly deteriorating and it is time for a change. This is not a mere complaint, this is a call for action. For those who cherish Georgetown County and want the best for its future, we need leadership that respects community traditions, manages growth responsibly and permits unsuccessful burden on financial. The current administrator has failed at these aspects.
Mr. Cumbey, please don't make personal attacks.
This isn't an attack. I'm not attacking anybody. I'm just saying.
I'm making that judgment call and it is an attack. Do not attack the county administrator. You were told that at the beginning.
I stand for the community to ask her for her resignation.
This one only says M.H. on the line.
Good evening. I haven't talked to you before. I was pretty upset when I saw the article in the paper about this surf fishing. I got to tell you, the wrote-hades is paved with good intentions. This land shark regulations was a mistake. You all should pay. You should pay with your jobs on this council. Because it's wrong. You went too far. And I came here to oppose these county restrictions of our constitutional rights to fish and hunt. This ban on daytime surf fishing reminds me of COVID, shutting beaches, shutting all the beaches down, six-foot distancing, wearing a mask, getting vaccinated with a DNA-contaminated shot that wasn't even approved. Now, like this law, it's completely unconstitutional, and it's a control operation like COVID. I believe this is a test to see how far the controlling on us can go. I'm against Georgetown rewriting the fishing game laws. I'm against Georgetown rewriting the definition of beaches or beach waters. That's ridiculous. I'm against banning shark fishing. There's no reason to follow what Myrtle Beach does. If you feel you must ignore the citizens, you will not be listening to the people's voices who put you in office. Enacting laws costs money. Each and every law costs us, the taxpayers. Are you going to have the sheriffs on the beach to write tickets to these noncompliant fishermen and criminalize fishing? It's ridiculous that I should have to come here tonight to even talk to you. It's totally insane. You need to vote this down, not ask DNR how to regulate fishing. People love Georgetown because it's not Myrtle Beach, and we have freedoms. You're taking them away and not listening to people. Good night.
Now, we've got our final speaker.
Thank you all for your comments. We'll move down to the consent agenda. Six matters on the consent agenda were previously approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. Procurement number 25-001, FY26 Rosenbauer Ariel for Georgetown County Fire Department. Purchase will be from a vendor, Rosenbauer. Items on the consent agenda, they were previously approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. Procurement number 25-001, FY26 Rosenbauer Ariel for Georgetown County Fire Department. Purchase will be from vendor Rosenbauer South Dakota LLC of Lions SD for one Rosenbauer Ariel complete with Rosenbauer Commander chassis and Rosenbauer Viper Ariel for a total cost of $1,368,039. Procurement number 25-045, one HR100 Ariel ladder truck for Midway Fire Rescue. Director Brandon Ellis recommends the approval of this fire truck utilizing the FY26 surf schedule and recommend approval of the HR10 Ariel ladder truck through vendor Fire Line Incorporated for a total cost of $1,973,566. Procurement number 25-046, body worn cameras and software for the Sheriff's Department. Sheriff's Department recommends approval of a new five-year agreement with the vendor Coban Technologies for a quantity of 147 body worn cameras with Nexus Cloud subscription for FY26 cost of $205,130 and total five-year cost of $955,370. Procurement number 25-047, Mower Max Boom mower for Public Works. Public Works and Public Services recommend approval of a ward of the requested Mower Max Prime mower mover with boom attachment from vendor Atmax Equipment Company utilizing their state contract number 4400032503 for a total amount of $254,999.41. Contract number 2305055DF, task order number one for engineering services for the corner loop bridge replacement. Staff recommends the approval of this task order number one on the existing Georgetown County contract 23055DF for the amount of $408,540. SC Works Partner MOU, this is renewal of the memorandum of understanding and infrastructure funding agreement that is required to coordinate running the workforce delivery system for the region. We'll move now to our appointment of clerk de counsel. The chair nominates Alma Sierra as clerk de counsel. Ms. Alma has been serving as deputy clerk of council for approximately one year and has performed all of her duties well and faithfully, and also comes with the recommendation of our retiring clerk of council, Ms. Teresa Floyd, who served council exceptionally in all aspects for over 25 years. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Mercado. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Welcome to the circus, Ms. Alma. We'll move down to public hearings. We have a public hearing on ordinance number 25-24, an ordinance to authorize an approving agreement for the development of a joint industrial and business park by and between Ori County and Georgetown County with property located in Ori County at Postal Way to require payment of a fee in lieu of abhorrent taxes by businesses and industries located in the park to apply zoning and other laws in the park to provide for law enforcement jurisdiction in the park and to provide for the distribution of park revenues within Georgetown County. We're now open the floor for ordinance 24-24, 25-24, sorry. Hearing no discussion, the public hearing is closed. We'll move down to third hearing of ordinances. Ordinance number 25-21, to amend the previously approved Sandaling Bay subdivisions on his FDD, or Flexible Design District located on the corner of Martin Luther King Road and Pettigrew Drive in Polley's Island, identified as TMS number 04-0413-047-0000 for a change to the rear setback regulations in County Council District 6. We have a report from our senior planner, Mr. Matthew Millwood. Mr. Millwood, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is on the Sandaling Bay FDD. It's a pre-approved major subdivision of 22 lots in the Polley's Island area on the corner of Martin Luther King and Pettigrew. Originally, the setback established for the rear yard was 20 feet. They are asking for an amendment to take that down five feet to 15 feet for the rear setback. There are four houses already built on this lot. They are on this property in this development. Those houses do meet the 20-foot, but moving forward with some of the wetlands and some of the eastern tracks on this lot and the porches that are designed for these houses, it looks like they need a couple extra feet. So they are coming back for this amendment. Other than that, there are no changes since second reading, and I'll try to entertain any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Millwood. Are there any questions for Mr. Millwood?
Matt, did these go through Planning Commission, or do they need to? The request, or does it just come to us for a change?
It has already been through Planning Commission, and they requested approval to this body.
And it was unanimous?
That's, I can't guarantee that, but it was approved by Planning Commission.
I can look it up. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Chair will entertain a motion on ordinance 25-21, to amend the previously approved Sandaling Bay subdivisions on his FDD located at the corner of Martin Luther King Road and Pettigrew Drive in Polley's Island identified as TMS 040413047-0000. A change to the rear setback regulations in County Council District 6. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Mercado. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Anderson. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Ordinance carries.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 2522 has been postponed at the beginning of our meeting, so we'll move down to ordinance number 25-23, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of abhorrent taxes, an incentive agreement by and between Diatom US Incorporated the company and Georgetown County, South Carolina, providing for a payment by the company of certain fees in lieu of abhorrent taxes, providing for special source revenue credits in connection with such an agreement, providing for the location of the property and the allocation of fees in lieu of abhorrent taxes payable in the agreement, providing for the establishment of multi-county industrial business park and providing for the matters relating thereto. Is there a motion on the floor to actually defer ordinance 2523 until our next meeting because we were one day short, August?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we defer ordinance 25-23.
You've heard a motion from Councilor Newton. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Second by Councilor Moran. Is there any discussion? All in favor of deferring ordinance 25-23, please raise your hand. And all opposed? The ordinance is deferred. Move down to second reading of ordinances, ordinance number 25-24. Do we just do? Two, three. 25-24, an ordinance to authorize an approving agreement for the development of a joint industrial and business park by and between Ori County and Georgetown County with properly located in Ori County at Postal Way to require and payment of fee in lieu of abhorrent taxes by businesses and industries located in the park to apply zoning and other laws in the park to provide for law enforcement jurisdiction in the park and to provide for the distribution of park revenues within Georgetown County. County Attorney Jay Watson will now give his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council, you've seen a number of these in the past, these multi-county industrial parks that we partner with Ori County or other counties. The law requires adjoining or a partnership of counties. This was a new one with Ori County that is titled or called Postal Way. It will be administered by them, and the revenues collected by Ori County, a portion will be sent to Georgetown. There's nothing really particular unusual in this one. We would ask for your approval of it.
You've heard a report from our county attorney, Mr. Jay Watson, on ordinance number 25-24, an ordinance to authorize an approving agreement of the development of a joint industrial and business park by and between Ori County and Georgetown County with property located in Ori County at Postal Way to require the payment of a fee in lieu of abhorrent taxes by businesses and industries located in the park to apply zoning, other laws in the park and to provide for law enforcement jurisdiction in the park and to provide for the distribution of park revenues within Georgetown County. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Newton. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, the motion carries. Move down to ordinance number 25-25, to amend Georgetown County procurement ordinance 20-32. We'll hear a report from Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have gone through the procurement ordinance. Most of the changes are really cleaning up the language. We adjusted some of the definitions. There were a number of places throughout the ordinance that referred to person. We changed those to party because oftentimes we're dealing with corporations or maybe individuals. So we adjusted the definitions. We also brought some, a little more uniformity to timelines for notices, five days, seven days, 15 days, things like that, to get a little more uniformity. There's not a lot in it that was particularly substantive, I would call, but cleaning up some of the language and clarifying some of the definitions. I do see that our procurement officer is here. I didn't expect her to be here tonight, but Nancy, is there anything you would want to add to that for the summary I've just given?
Thank you. So the last time we revised the procurement ordinance, it was in 2021. We did it fully in 2020 to bring it up to date and increase thresholds. And then in 2021, we added just additional types of contracts that we can use. Some other items that we changed were we added some additional exceptions, such as professional licensed services to include legal counsel and lobbyists. We also added economic development ventures and airport fixed base operator and other aviation industry operations. And another thing that was something that we updated was the surplus personal property. That language we just added, so if we have something that we find to be of little or no equitable market value, that we can go ahead and just dispose of it by any legal means necessary without having to go through the full GovDeals auction. One other, just minor change, as he already addressed, was we did change the protest period from seven business days to be seven calendar days, and that's for protests of solicitation or award. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I had a question, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Anderson.
Ms. Nancy, with all of these changes, and I'm sure you've been pushing for these for a while, what was the most significant one? What was the number one on your list that you wanted to get done?
For me, it was the protest change, the number of days, because we used to actually hard copy mail it, and now the notifications are by email. So if I have a protest from someone, I'm getting it within 24 to 48 hours.
And what was the time before when it's a hard snail mail or whatever you were using there?
It was seven business days.
Seven business days.
And we just changed it to calendar days.
So that's speeded up your cycle quite a bit then. All right, well, congratulations.
Thank you. Just trying to make things more efficient.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Any further questions?
And we would ask for approval.
You heard the report on ordinance 25-25, to amend the Georgetown County procurement ordinance number 2032. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So moved by Councilor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Cooper. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Thank you.
All opposed? Move down to first reading of ordinances. The following ordinances are to be read in the record by title only. Ordinance number 25-26, to amend the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map to reflect the re-designation of tax map parcels 41-0404-011-01-00, 41-0404-11-03-00 through 41-0404-11-03-04, 41-0404-011-16-00, 41-0404-017-00, 41-0404-011-18-01, and 41-0404-011-19-00, located in Merle's Endlet from the rural residential to residential.
Good job, Mr. Chairman.
That's a lot of zeros. Ordinance 25-27, to rezone one parcel totaling 1.06 acres located in the north side of Ditchdigger Lane in Merle's Endlet from forest agriculture to residential one-half acre or R1/2 in Council District 6. And ordinance number 25-28, an ordinance to regulate nonconsent toing from private commercial property in Georgetown County. Move down to the approval of amendments for the regular council meeting, June 24, 2025. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Charlton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Moran. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, amendments are approved. We will now enter into an executive session and receive a legal counsel discussing legal matters pursuant to SE Code annotated 30-4-70A2. Is there a motion to enter into the executive session?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Moran. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, we're in executive session.
[645.38]
We're now back from executive session. Please note that no actions or votes were taken during executive session. Is there a motion to return to open session?
No move.
So moved by Councilor Moran. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. We're now back in open session. If there's any further business to come, report to council at this time. Here none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
So moved by Councilor Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Charlton. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. We stand adjourned.